The Planning Commission to order. Let's see. First item is the consent agenda. The commission may request for consent item to be moved to the regular agenda for presentation and public comment. Otherwise, the consent agenda will be considered in one vote. We're going to have one public hearing. The only thing on the consent agenda is the minutes from last month's meeting. So I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on the consent agenda item? All right, I'm going to close public comment and take a motion.
Second.
Right, a motion from Brittany, a second from Luke. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Five zero. Regular agenda subdivision plats. The planning commission has final authority for approval. Appeals may be directed to the city council. Item one, FP 2336 Stonewall Estates at Fairview. A request for a final plat in the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city of San Angelo called Stonewall Estates at Fairview being 39.351 acres totaling 23 lots. A variance request has been submitted for paving width on Whittington Loop and a variance for paving on Fairview Road, a major collector.
Good morning, Planning Commission. Erin Benoy, Assistant Director of Planning and Development Services. Today we have the Stonewall Estates at Fairview. This is in our extraterritorial jurisdiction out to the southeast of town between, within our, what we'd call our loop between 306 and 87. This is to create 23 rural residential lots. The vision plan, which does kind of underwrite the area out there, does describe this area as rural, and so rural development for rural homes. And it does front on Fairview School Road as a major collector, and there is a loop within the subdivision proposed as Whittington Loop. So here are a couple of these, I'm going to go back to this one here. This is the western end of where it will start. And again, the visuals are, well, it's farmland. Grew up in farmland, so to me it's pretty, but for some it may not be. But it's flat, it's hard to distinct different landmarks, but I do know that the applicant representative is here. If you do notice at the very back of this picture, right back here, that is a new kind of wall volunteer fire department structure that faces 87. So that's about where 87 is back there. I'm standing on Fairview Road here at this corner, just looking there. And then the next couple of images are the one on the left side, that is the right or the southern right of way. So that is the frontage of where these lots will front on. The one on the left or on the right side of the screen, that is the north side of Fairview Road. So going out and measuring the distance between the edge of road and to the telephone pole is about 10 and a half feet. And so I think that's significant in consequence to the variance request for this southern part of the road. I should have measured the north side, I didn't, but we do have, and I'll show on the plat in just a moment, there actually is 60 foot of right of way for this right of way. So on this shot right here, again, this is just the overhead. If you can see right here, this little notch out right here is where wall fire department structure is. And then it comes through, and I'm going to just go down here, and there's one residential structure already that will remain. And then it comes down here and stops at this residential structure. So as I turn off that zoom in, you can see the distance there. Now I don't recall the exact distance, but I want to say close to 2,200 linear feet. They do have a looped road in there that breaks that block length up, and they will have some lots that will front on Fairview School Road. So again, here's that plat. You can see down there in the lower left, that's where the View Fire Department is. Then you kind of see the notch on track three. You see the looped road in there and the existing structures there right off of Fairview School Road. And then it goes down to the east and stops at that next residential property. Here's our master thoroughfare plan. Before we start looking at all the different colors, I want you to look at the two red flags. The red flag on the left of the screen is correct. The red flag on the right of the screen is too far to the east. It should be right here at this property here.
Okay.
And so that's really the extent of where that is. It is not going all the way down to that even much further. It is, while this is a large area, it is not as far as I thought it was when I was out in the field, so. Again, 87 is there to the south. You can see that in the major arterial, and it is a future freeway. That is the direct north-south road is Loop 306. And then the purple that comes in an angle, that is South Chadburn. And then, of course, Fairview School Road is the blue line that goes across there. If I were to expand this out, say another quarter mile on either side, you would see that that Fairview School Road actually comes to two terminuses. It does not keep going, it turns into other roads and goes north and south. So the variance, we'll start with Fairview School Road. The existing pavement is around 22 feet. The applicant proposes to add additional eight feet to the south for a total of 30 feet with a two-core surface treatment. The minimum standard for a major collector is 36 feet in width. So they're asking for a six-foot variance. The city staff at this time believe, and the applicant believes, that the variance is reasonable due to Fairview School Road currently functions as more of a minor collector, although it is a major collector. That's how it's designated. The volume of traffic does not necessarily meet a major collector as of yet. Now, that doesn't mean in the future it doesn't, and I know that's our concern. Again, this will just have 23 residential lots that will funnel to the arterials, either down onto 87 or onto Chadburn, just depending on where they're going, whether they're going to the school district, or you're going to work or into town. Adding the eight foot does widen the road, and the wide array is large enough, and it does have, since there's not a lot of obstructions out there right now, there is a lot of clear sight for visibility when you're turning on and off the road. So that is the variance for Fairview School Road. The next one is on for the Whittington Loop. This is a proposed new roadway. The minimum standards are 50 foot of right of way and 40 foot of paving. The applicant is proposing the 50 foot of right of way, and they're proposing a 30 foot of paving, which is four feet more than what our standard minimum is if the road was existing. Again, this is a new road. County roads that we've measured out in that area are anywhere from the 20 to 26 in width, and talking with the county commissioner, and he said that's mainly for maintenance purposes. Again, our subdivision ordinance here does have the responsibility to look at that and see how that, what standards are in place. Again, we believe this variance is reasonable for the looped road in Whittington Loop. It does have the right of way being dedicated. It is large lot configuration primarily due to septic systems and water availability, whether that's rural water or well water. If they were to do future development, say they split those larger lots in two, go from a one and a half acre to two, three-quarter acres for whatever reason, that, at that time, we at the planning commission would have the ability to say, we need to add additional paving. So I just wanted to point that out. So here's staff's recommendation. Staff's recommendation is to approve the Stonewall Estates at Fairview and approval of the variance request for Fairview School Road and Whittington Loop with a subject to five conditions. Our pretty standard conditions is tax certificate, additional paving, or get the variance granted for both Fairview and Whittington Loop, and then provide a letter for alternative water source for the controlling water supply district. If they chose not to go with the water supply district, they would just get something from the local environmental health group saying that they could have well water. And then the typical drainage study for a project this large out there to evaluate the drainage in that area. With that, I'd be happy to go back to any slides and answer any questions. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And I do just want to remind everyone, back in March of 2022, we did redo our standards for streets and right of ways based on new versus existing. In this case, excuse me, in this case, Fairview School Road actually has more right of way than what would be required for an existing major collector. Now, only by three feet, but still it has more. It is really the paving width, there's a, how do we get to 36 feet on, for the entire road, a certain amount on the south side and a certain amount on the north side.
It looks like the lots are all over an acre. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And they're going to have septic?
Yes, there's no wastewater system out there, and so they will have to work with the county to get septic permits for each lot.
Okay. I'm going to open it up in just a second. Sorry, excuse me. Does anyone else have questions for the staff? Okay. We're going to open it up for public comment. Yes, ma'am, if you don't mind coming up to the podium, stating your name and address or single member district.
I don't know my single member district. Jackie Chestnut. I'm a local engineer, JCR Engineering in Texas Hay Feeders Incorporated, and I live in Knickerbocker, Texas, but this is my primary place where I've done business and where my office was for years.
Yes, ma'am.
And still do my corporation out of. So my question is, and I was on planning and zoning in Round Rock, Texas, years ago and planning and the development review, and I've been in this city for 35 years, came to work for Johnson &amp; Johnson. So I have lots of interest in this city and what we're doing here and in the planning of it, because it looks, it appears we've got some issues. So my question's on this for the variances, and I live out off of a county road on Wind Road in Knickerbocker off 2335, and I used to live, I believe this is by Long Haven Cemetery. Is that not correct? Right?
I think that is off of Chadburn.
It's considerably south.
Correct, and I lived on Butterfly over in Harvest Acres when I first moved here. And so, and I'm so, and I live in an area where, and we're moving now from, to improve the roads and all in this area. So my question is, why are we doing a variance to not go ahead and do the 36 feet? Why are we doing the 30 feet? Is it a cost issue or whatever? Because we know what's going to happen, and we know in this community where you're building, and we're talking about that's going to happen.
Yes, ma'am.
And we've got a fire station and all that, so why are we doing a variance? Is it just because we don't want to spend the money? Because we know it's going to happen.
Yes.
And we know the city services are going to be required, and right now they're on septic and they're on well, and I've been there, and then all these things happen. So why not go ahead and prepare for that as part of planning? And so that's my question on that one, is why not go ahead and do it now if we're going to do it?
Yes, ma'am.
And not so. And then on the second one, we're doing a variance. What was the variance on it for?
That's 40 feet to 30.
Right, and 40 feet to 30, and let's go ahead and do 40 feet now, because I live on a county road that wasn't paved when I first moved there 25 years ago, and then they came in and paved it. And right now they're in the process of widening it, because just what's happened has happened out there as well, which is the traffic has increased. And that's also where they're bringing the 42-inch gas line through right now.
Yes, ma'am.
The, it's coming right now from my house, and so now we're coming through and doing all that. And so I've watched this process, and let's go ahead and admit it's going to happen and take care of it. So we don't, we the people driving the roads.
Yes, ma'am.
And we pay for the property, and we own the property, not anybody else, and so we should, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Jackie.
Good morning, Russell with SKG Engineering. First want to thank staff and Erin and Sherry and Ray for working with us, meeting with us to kind of work through this. It took a few renditions to get to this part, to kind of work through some of the concerns and input that the city had on this. So really what it comes down to, and our variance request is for the paving width and the paving surface and the curb and gutter. And Erin's absolutely right. If you look at the ordinance as been amended, our, the right of way width minimum is 56 or 70 feet, depending on if it's existing or new. So I'm kind of seeing this as an existing condition in which we apply the ordinance standards that we can utilize and rely on the minimum widths, kind of as our, as our point to that we need to achieve, though. So I'm kind of...
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Russell. It looks like there's a request for two variances. So are you speaking for both variances or just for Fairview?
At this point, Fairview.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, for Fairview School Road, it's an existing right of way, an existing road.
Yes, sir.
So yes, it would be kind of the standard. Now, the Whittington Road, no, that's a new, that's new, so that's, there is a true variance request for that one for the width. So for Fairview School Road, you know, the existing width is approximately 22 feet. We're proposing eight, maybe even 10 feet of additional width, so that would put it anywhere from 30 to 32 feet in width. And we're talking about adding to only the south side of Fairview School Road, because that's what our development is up against. And so, you know, this area is largely undeveloped. I don't know that there's really any platted lots. There's some homesides out there, but none of those are just survey and abstract, never really been through the subdivision process that would ever trigger kind of any improvements to Fairview School Road. So if and when development on the north side of Fairview School Road was to occur, then they would have an obligation to come in and widen or add to the north side of Fairview School Road. And so if we're, we've added eight to 10 feet, and now Fairview School Road is at 32 feet, someone to the north comes in and develops, they add eight to 10 feet, and so now they're at 40, 42 feet. So we've met the minimum width needed for a major collector street of Fairview School Road. So I think, you know, even though we asked for the variance for that, it was kind of focused on the pavement type. You know, the county road, that road, Fairview School Road out there has existed forever, for as long as I've been around.
Yeah.
Went to school at Fairview even, so, you know, it's just been there for a while now in that circumstance. So we would be coming in, you know, we can, we didn't plan on dedicating the additional five feet, but we can. We don't really have a huge objection to that. That'll just take off five feet of right of way along Fairview School Road. We'll dedicate the five feet. But really, we're just asking to be able to kind of narrow that, not necessarily narrow it down, but be just obligated to improve our half, because I was kind of under the impression, that's the way we always look at them, is
Yes, sir.
We go for these undeveloped, we go and improve our half. There is that, if you looked at that picture, Erin talked about there's a very large overhead electric line that runs kind of pretty close to that south edge there. So we would ask for your approval on the variance. We even met with the city engineer, kind of posed all of this question to him. You know, this is not in the city limits, not in really in the short-term window to be annexed. There won't be city services provided out here. This is in the area of Miller's View Dual for the water. So the developer is talking to Miller's View Dual. You know, they've analyzed their system. You know, if he goes in here and adds these, he'll have an obligation to spend maybe upwards of $200,000 to upgrade a system for Miller's View Dual to be able to provide the water needed for this location. So there won't, there will not be city water and sewer services provided out there for this. So that's not expected. On the internal loop, you know, we're talking about a total of 12 lots that would be feeding to this. So large lots, you know, an acre and a half plus, I would expect that the developer would most likely put a prohibition against further development or subdevelopment, you know, such that someone would not be allowed to go in there and divide these lots any smaller. As Mr. Benoy pointed out, if they do, they would be back here in front of you, and at that point in time, you know, that we get the variance today, they would, I would see the wisdom in requiring them to widen the street if they want to start stacking more homes in there. But the idea of this is to keep it a larger size lot development and not really allow any further development of these lots into any smaller lots. So, you know, these, this is kind of in that county maintained area, it's kind of in this ETJ that the city rules apply, but the county maintains part of it. So we would just kind of ask for your approval of the variances as requested and as supported by staff.
Okay.
Happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have questions for Russell? Thank you, Russell.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Please, come on up.
I live in one of those areas that the county maintains and the city pretends to have some authority over, and it's a mess.
Yes.
It doesn't work. I live on one of those roads that's been there since, let's see, I bought there 25 years ago, and like I said, they paved part of it shortly after the county did move there, and then the rest of it afterwards, and it's been a mess since then.
Yes, ma'am.
And so we got to think in the future, we got to not say that, you know, because we know what's going to happen out here. This is going to turn, and eventually have to be supplied by the city, because this is what happens. This is how cities grow, and this is what we do. Because I lived through Round Rock and Austin and all this stuff. And so I, that's why I don't like giving these variances up front, because you're not looking ahead.
Yes, ma'am.
And these city, these people that own this property, that have their septics and all that stuff and provide their own water, and now if you're going to change all that, that also adds cost to all these people.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay?
We understand. Thank you.
Good morning. Appreciate y'all meeting here.
Good morning.
I'm Nick Curry. I am the developer of question. And to answer the young lady's question, it is definitely about cost.
Oh, I know, everything's about cost.
If this variance is not... If this variance is not approved, then this project's dead, because I've already got $200,000 to upgrade the McKeska pump station for Miller's View Dual.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, I've developed in town, well, in Bentonwood, I can get three lots per acre. Out here, you got to have at least a half acre, and I don't like half-acre lots. I was hoping to provide something with a little more acreage. But the reality is, once you have to expand Fairview School Road for $200,000, and then if I don't get a variance, it's more than that, and a $200,000 pump station, I got some other property down the road that'd work a whole lot better.
Yes, sir.
But I liked the location of this and was willing to give it a shot. I don't think it'll be annexed until many years after I'm buried in Paint Rock.
Right.
I just don't think it's something going to happen very quick by any stretch of the imagination. And I, you know, I was driving out there, coming back from the ranch the other day down the loop, and there wasn't a single car going down Fairview School Road.
Right.
It's not a, it's not going to be used, because you can use the loop. There's no reason to go over there and drive. I mean, it's just there. But I'd like to do this project. I think it'd be beneficial for Tom Green County and the city, but when you add, when you get an extra $400, $450,000 in costs that you weren't expecting.
Yes, sir.
It makes you think, well, maybe this is not what I ought to be doing. But I'd sure appreciate you considering it.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment. So it looks like there are two variances requested, so I'm going to, I guess I'm going to share my opinion on the variances. The Whittington Loop, there's only 12 lots that are accessed by it, so I'm not as concerned about granting a variance, provided that the fire department's okay with it, which I'm assuming they are if you've, if you're supporting that variance. Fairview, could you go back to the aerial map, please, Erin?
Any particular one?
No, that one's perfect. That'll work. So obviously Fairview's very close to US 87, which I would expect to carry a lot of the load. You show that Fairview is continuing eastward past the loop. Has any of that been developed?
No, that is still farmland, and I forget what that eastern road is, but it stops there and then goes north and south, which actually goes back up.
So Loop 306 would be one end, the eastern end of Fairview, and I'm assuming Cristoville Road or US 87 is going to be the western end?
Fairview runs into...
Yeah, so once you get past Loop 306, there's another north-south road that's somewhere right out here that Fairview School Road stops. I've made the assumption it just kind of kept going, but the reality is it does stop. And most people will be utilizing Chadburn here as far as an intersection, because it's a lot more controlled than even this one here, and safer to turn south or to turn north to go into town or to go out to the school district that serves this area.
It looks like that road's Crupala.
It's Crupala.
Yeah, thank you.
Crupala.
Yeah. I know there's a, somewhere right in that area.
Further north?
Okay. And then just past here is Broadnaxx.
Yes.
And of course it turns and goes north to
It dogs.
Sheahan.
Okay.
Up through there. This actually is where it kind of turns, and there's this big 90-degree S curve that comes back to a crossover on 87. So anticipation is, depending on how folks that live here, whether they're taking kids to school or coming to town to do jobs, most of that traffic we anticipate is going to go down Chadburn. Obviously, a lot of it's going to go to 87 if they're trying to get to a certain part of town.
So I'm looking at this road, and it's designated as a major collector, and I'm wondering if it's, if we think it's still going to serve as a major collector?
I don't think it would. I mean, if you look at the map, there's Goat Road and Fairview actually turns up and runs into South Gas Plant. Those are both considered minor arterials. And then if you actually jaunt down the curve of Fairview and take a left on a different Fairview School Road, you have the drought development that was put in
Yep.
within the last five years, and there's 38 lots there, and that road never changed to a minor or any sort of
Yeah.
So if you look at the area, that's really the only improved road going east-west. As you go north, there's not really another improved road going east-west. And usually at the time when thoroughfare plans are looked at and designated, they're trying to see what might be reality, and well, there's, here's this road that's, in reality, that could maybe widen it over time. But you see the dash lines on there, those are potential future roads as collectors to get people for circulation
Yes, sir.
if this area starts to subdivide and develop over time.
So currently, the one thing you do see there is the alternative school there is there for the joint between Wall and several other school districts. So you do see a lot of buses going to that Fairview campus for that purpose.
Yes, sir.
And then the softball fields are out there, so you see a ton of cars out there when all that's going on.
Yep. Okay. What's the minimum width of a lane?
Let me see if my city engineer is here, because he's going to have that knowledge more than I do. He is not here. I know we don't like to go below 10 feet, but I don't really know, to be honest. I don't want to set that as a standard. Right now it's 22 feet wide, so right now it'd be 12 or 11 feet on either lane right now.
Okay. And then my last question, I know this is kind of crazy to think, but there's half a dozen lots that are going to front on Fairview. So can they park on the road?
That would be a county question. I mean, it is right of way. Usually large lots like this, the house is going to be further back with the lane.
I wouldn't expect that they would put a lot of cars on...
Yeah. The idea for the right of way and the extra space is for a tractor to pull over and somebody to be able to go around them.
Okay. Okay.
Ma'am, could you come up here to the mic?
Yes, ma'am. I'll open comment. Go ahead, Jackie, please.
It looks like it says for an arterial road were 10 to 12 feet.
Okay, thank you.
I was in the ballpark.
So an existing road that's 22 feet wide and a proposed variance of eight feet gets us 30 feet of width along this stretch. That might be adequate for three lanes is kind of what I'm thinking here. I'll open up public comment for Mr. Gully. Go ahead.
You know, and if eight feet seems marginal, you know, 10 feet, 11 feet,
Yeah.
you know, just kind of some, something in there to compromise.
Yes, sir.
So if eight feet seems minimal, I think 10 or 11 feet, we would, that would be helpful for what we're doing there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Don't we typically, in a situation like this with a, with new replat, don't we typically have the developer be responsible for their incremental half of the road?
Yes, that is correct. Because the anticipation is the north side may develop at some point, they would come in and do their incremental half.
So in which case, I guess, you know, if we're adding eight to 10 feet on this side, obviously expanding it another 10 feet on the other side, then we're a lot closer to where
That's where we need to be, yeah.
We want to be to handle additional traffic from additional lots going in, right? I mean...
Yes.
And this being a county maintained road, as far as how they stripe or not stripe?
Yeah.
I mean, there's no stripes out there now. I don't anticipate them putting any stripes on the roadway. I don't anticipate them putting any stripes on the roadway. Whoop, sorry about that. But as, if you're driving here and you've got a farmer that's driving down to his field and you want to be able to get around, you want to have enough room, as well as folks that are pulling out onto the road to pull out safely.
Okay. Anyone else have thoughts they want to share or make a motion?
Can you, um, I'm going to move forward with making a motion to approve as presented, granting both variances.
Okay, so, we have, we have a motion to approve with an eight-foot variance on, or an eight-foot paving requirement on Fairview, and a 30-foot paving requirement on Whittington Loop, as the staff has recommended.
Correct.
Okay?
Second.
And a second. Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Travis, I just have to abstain.
Okay, so we have four in favor and one abstain.
That means it would be approved, just for everybody on, out in the public that's listening or watching, that does mean that it is approved.
Okay. Next case, RP 2337. Lial subdivision, section two, request for residential replat to Lial subdivision, section two, combining six RS1 of the Exol addition, block 31, lots one through six, into zoning lots, and RS1 being lot, excuse me, lot being .961 acres, renamed Lial subdivision, section two. Wouldn't make a lot of sense, but...
Alright, so this is a, um, combining of lots, so that is a subdivision under our ordinance. Uh, it is going to be the Lial addition, section two, and I'll show you the reasoning behind that in just a few moments, as they actually own property to the north and have a preliminary plat and some final platted areas there. This is inside our city limits. It's SMD number four, Mrs. Lucy Gonzalez. The neighborhood plan is very interesting, right there on Armstrong. Everything to the right is Paulan, which I was very surprised, uh, but that's still considered Paulan neighborhood. It is zoned RS family, uh, or RS1 single-family. So, you can see the red outline here. This is a very old plat here to the south called the Exol addition. Goes all the way down to Main Street, um, and 19th. And there were six lots that were platted, and let me move this forward. You can see all these individual residential lots that were platted way back in the, I want to say in the early teens. The property owner owns all six of those lots, and they currently have a home there that faces Armstrong and access to Armstrong. And so, that's why this is kind of turned, just so you can get the orientation that to the top is northwest, is across Armstrong, and east is back towards Holcomb Street. You do notice on this one that there is nothing up there that shows a 24th street. And I'll get to that in just a moment, but just to, to give you the reference point. So, here is the, um, preliminary plat that's to the north, which is the Lial preliminary plat. They have lot one, two, and three, and you can see lot two is a large lot behind those that front Armstrong. But they do have a, about a 62 or 64-foot flag that comes in there to hit Armstrong that was approved back in 2022 here at the planning commission. At that time, there was a footy, 40-foot access easement for anyone that needed to access those lots that fronted that area. Uh, and so, as you'll see, one of the notes that we have, as that's not in the same plat, it hasn't a, um, preliminary plat that's controlling for that area, we anticipate that that will become 24th Street somewhere in the future. And so, that's why the access easement was required back then. So, again, here at that bottom, on the bottom left, you see block 31. It is lots one, two, three, four, five, and six that they own. They will be facing Armstrong. So, the question becomes, what happens to lots seven and eight? Seven and eight actually have a home on them, already joining them together, and they have access on Holcomb Street. So, all of those lots do have direct and abutting access to a public right-of-way.
Okay.
So, staff is in recommendation of this, subject to one condition, being the tax certificate. There are no improvements being required with the state right-of-way and state road on, excuse me, Armstrong. Water and sewer are also in the area, as well as hydrants. The only notes that we added was that the access easement that's on the preliminary plat to the north, um, we, we, the city, anticipate that to be dedicated right-of-way in the future, depending on how that plat plays out, uh, as well as if they ask for any additional access to the Tech Dot roadway, that they would go through Tech Dot to gain that access. We did receive two letters on, uh, Friday in support of this. Uh, it is a residential replat, so we do make notice, and we did get two letters in support and none against.
Okay.
That'll answer any questions.
Anyone have questions for the staff? Excuse me. Alright, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this case? Please come forward, state your name and address or single-member district. Alright, I'm going to close public comment and take thoughts or a motion.
Move to approve as presented.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five-zero. Rezonings and comprehensive plan amendments. City Council has final authority for approval of rezonings and amendments to the comprehensive plan. Case one, Z 2317, request for a zone change from single-family residential to two-family residential at 1212, 1210, and 1208 Roosevelt Street.
Good morning, Commissioner Sherry Bailey, principal planner. You have the request, um, for a rezoning from RS1 to RS2, two-family residential, for the three lots that are in red on the screen. Uh, this area has, over the past five or six years, gone through a, a major redesign, a, a major plan of what the original intent was, and then has really kind of slowed down in development. There are two lots here on the bottom that do not show, uh, as having single-family homes on them. They do have homes, what was originally intended was to move the, uh, two homes from the Baptist, uh, this... I forget what they call the, the Baptist home area up there when they were going through some changes. Moved them down and then, uh, to remodel those homes. In the discussion on the original plating that was done on here, there was a hope to buy more of those homes that were surplused and to bring them on to the lots, and that has not occurred. The applicant in this case has been talking to, uh, the original owner of that property and has purchased those three lots, and ultimately would like to purchase the property on the other side of that, of those flag lot access area, and to rezone that also to RS2. This is in District Three, Harry Thomas's district, it is the Fort Concho East neighborhood. And as I started to indicate, the applicant wants to build three duplexes on those three lots. We did notify, I sent out 17 notices. We received zero in favor and zero in opposition when I did the original, uh, slide for this presentation. Since then, I have talked to the property owner on this lot, who has, uh, a single-family home there, and he is in protest. Does not like the idea of going to, uh, two-family residences instead of the original single-family, as was indicated when he first bought. The zoning around there is a, is an interesting mix in that it is, uh, single-family to the east and to the north, although there has not been any development to, to the immediate north because both water and sewer are difficult to extend into that area. There's low-rise multifamily to the west. There is low-rise multifamily to the south. And then, um, if you look to the west of just that bottom low-rise area, there's also, uh, what I would consider, uh, a multifamily development in there. So, it's a really transitional area in our older area of the town. And in looking at it from a planning standpoint, we have often said, uh, when we're looking at future development in an area, that single-family and two-family are often equated as the smaller, uh, development, less of a multifamily designation. So, in evaluating this, we looked at both the vision plan and the city policies that have occurred in the past. We say, think that this is consistent with both the vision plan and city, city policies. The proposal is consistent with the zoning ordinance and our interpretation of how single-family and two-family have been used across the city. The requesting zoning is compatible with the surrounding area in the fact that this is an older area of town, and it does have a myriad of different zonings within that larger area. The changing conditions in this case is the need for duplex housing in the area. There has not been a real interest on building the single-family homes there, but duplexes, there is a great deal of interest, and it does meet a need. We believe there are no additional environmental effects. We believe that affordable housing is an ever-present need, and that is what the intent is for this property. And this housing is part of a logical and orderly pattern of development. And so, with that, staff is recommending approval of the request to rezone from single-family residential to two-family residential for this property. Are there any questions?
Anyone have questions? Alright, uh, no questions from us, so we're going to open it up for public comment. Yes ma'am, please. If you wish to speak, come on up, Jackie.
Hi. Uh, the question on, on this is, um, I understand, and this is the way cities move, and we move the single-family residential's to multi, and then multifamily, and then commercial and all this stuff. In doing this, and in doing this project, or thinking about doing this zone change, have you considered the long-term ramifications to the city sewer? The city water supply, because all of these, and they are old places, they are, they are supplied from our city sewer and our city water, and they're probably not designed to have additional loads, and you're adding loads on these things. And what's the city done to fix the problem we have already with sewer and water in this town to begin with, before we start adding loads?
Yes ma'am.
And we have no money in the budget for facilities. And every place downtown and in this area, including this facility we're standing in, has got sewer gas in it. So, I think, before we start adding more loads downtown into all these areas too, is there a plan in place for those of us that live here, for those kinds of things, before we jump out and do that? So, that's my question in planning these things. Is that part of the plan as well?
Thank you, Jackie.
Russell with SKG. I, I had worked with Ms. Denny on the original development in this area. There is a new sewer main that kind of runs to serve this, that's tied to existing sewer mains. There's a, a significant, sufficiently large enough water main in Roosevelt, Roosevelt, however you want to pronounce it, that would be large enough to provide water and sewer service. So, water and sewer service is really not a concern for, for, for duplex or single-family at this location. Thank you.
Thank you, Russell. Yes ma'am, come on up.
I would say one more thing. Again, I've seen this happen all over the city, and yes, and I've worked with, with you guys. You might remember, y'all recently surveyed my ranch out there. And again, we've got this supply now, but we're, the things that are supplying it, the main stuff, that's the problem, just like the courthouse over here that's filled with sewer gas again, and the, and the bank next to it, and everyplace else. It's lovely we can address these, because I know, I've dug them up and replaced them, but the thing coming into them, that's, and that's the city.
Okay.
And that's a problem, because I live in those places, I work in those places, and I reside in those places, and I retail in those places. Okay? So, I just want to know if that's being addressed. It's, like I said, where?
Understand.
Good morning. Thank you for your time this morning. I appreciate it. My name is Ms. Elisa Denny. I live at 1010 Roosevelt, property adjacent to this property.
Yes ma'am.
Let me bring you up to speed real quickly. When I began this development, it was a vision. I worked with Sherry and Erin and, and wrestled very closely. I now own 12 congruent acres right there. I have to tell you, the people that I live next door to in Bentonwood said, "You can't move over there. It's across from the project." So, I want to make it clear that where it says Benedict and that tan area down the bottom, 1180, that goes on to 1187, that is Section 8 subsidized housing. Okay? It's right across the street from my $450,000 house, right? Then you have on the opposite end, 1301 and 1317, is another subsidized Section 8 senior housing, right? I am across the street, literally, from the projects. I took a risk when I bought that property. And I will tell you that there was no water and sewer available to those 2.25 acres that you see circled in green. I took it upon myself to run a water main and a sewer main and provide to all of those lots with the great vision that I was going to create Rio Rancho. And I've done a pretty good job. I've built three houses. The gentleman that you saw here earlier, that was talking about the proposed splits and what have you, he purchased a lot from me and also built a new $350,000 home adjacent to this. I need you guys to help me get this done. It's a private road. I'm not asking you for a penny, okay? I've met with this young man. He's a beautiful builder. He's going to show you tons of examples of beautiful homes that he's built. He is willing to pay to finish the road, right? He can only get investors if we make this two-family change. It's what I have to do, right? Otherwise, it sits vacant. To my knowledge, that acre that we're in discussion about was vacant for maybe 20, 30 years, paying minimal tax. What I'm proposing to you here today is that we make an income opportunity for the city, and guess what? Our first customer already teed up, the base. They're all over it. We want base housing. So, I fall upon the mercy of the court. Thank you.
Thank you. Another gentleman coming up, please.
My name is Chris Chirino. I'm with Toric Construction, planning on building the duplexes for this land. They will be, uh, we are trying, the investors are trying to get military housing, basically to help the military out coming in. That's why we're building the rental houses for duplexes. You see a base look on that. It will have stone on the front, so it won't, it's not going to look. It's going to be a farmhouse look to it, on all, there's going to be four at start, and then the one B-side, the acre side, we're trying to develop as well. But the road will be paid for, no city help. That's why we're trying to get it to RS2, so we can bring something and fill those vacant lots up and kind of get, you know, make it look pretty on the low-end side of...
Sure.
What we're trying to do. Plus, it's close to the military base as well, so that helps.
Definitely.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for...
Yeah, thanks for the, thank you for the packet.
Okay. Chairman Stripling, just, just to clarify for everyone, that that property was platted. It did have an access, uh, road, if you will.
Yes.
Road's really not the word. It's really a driveway that goes to those lots.
Yes.
Uh, and so, through their development, they add some more width to, as they add houses towards the back. So, they're aware of that. They're willing to do that through their private development. And so, we just want everybody to understand that that's actually part of the private developer that will be doing that.
Okay. Yes ma'am.
And I, I love what you're doing down there. I think it's fantastic, because I think I love the mix and all that stuff, and I support that. I just want to make sure you get the, you get the support from, to the people that live there for you, so you have the proper things to supply those people. Yes ma'am, I agree with that. So, I love it. And I love the mix, this whole concept, you know, and I like that we're doing, singing with all that. Because I live in, out in the Boondocks, in a very... Because I live out in the Boondocks in a very, very nice home, but it's in the middle of nowhere, but there are people around me that don't. So, yeah, this is the way it should be. But get our city services to you and your people properly so they don't suffer the consequences, right?
Thank you. Okay, anyone else wish to speak on this case?
Good morning. My name is David Holman. I'm at 1214 Roosevelt, that front lot. I'm no longer protested and also.
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Grace Nunez lives on the other side. She's down here as well. Well, we're wondering, you know, with duplexes going in, the lack of pride of ownership and people that take care of their stuff, which comes along with renters, what guarantees will we have that they will be military that, you know, and is there any? Also, if they, I talked to Mr. Chris yesterday. He said that if they don't put the duplexes there, that they're going to bring in tiny homes and try to re-section that for HUD or Section 8 or as well. When I bought the house, as well as Ms. Grace, Elisa sold us this big idea. I was actually the project manager on that house for her, on the house that I bought from her. And she sold us this big idea, "Oh, we're going to build a nice street. There's going to be nice pillars on each side of the road and we're going to build these houses back here." Now, since then, I believe she's been over-leveraged and can't do it financially and I understand that, you know what I mean? But if you do vote against the multifamily, the two-family, and it stays single-family, would there have to be another hearing for them to move tiny homes or re-section that for HUD or Section 8?
I think I can answer several of these questions. So the first question about renters and military, we have no, and the city really has no authority to prevent these from being rental properties, whether they're single-family or duplex. No matter how we zone them, there's no, there's no really control that we have over preventing these properties from being rental properties. If they're tiny homes, you know, we're looking at the lots. We're looking at this tract of land and how many lots are being, it's being subdivided into. So in this case, there are three lots today. There are three lots, whether, they're requesting to change the zoning, but the lot number doesn't change. So if it's tiny homes, the minimum lot size is 5,000 feet, I believe, for single-family.
That is correct.
So the most that they could subdivide it would be 5,000 feet into the acreage that we're looking at here. I think they said it's about an acre. So with frontage and everything, that's maybe seven or eight homes, if I were to guess, that would be potentially platted back here. But again, that would have to come through us. That would be a replat process and we'd have to review and approve it. So does that help answer your questions?
Yeah, a little bit. So it would have to come back in front of you.
Yes, sir. Unless, unless they wanted, unless they wanted to put three tiny homes on the three lots that they've got.
Yeah.
And that would be permitted.
And so what I'm afraid of is that I'm going to lose equity. I'm going to, you know what I mean? I've took a lot of money. I've put SOD in. I've taken care of my house.
Sure.
You know, and I don't want to lose any equity. You know, we were sold on this big dream that she had. And, you know, I've seen the plot with the seven houses around it, including the ones that are not divided yet on the other side. And so, you know, that's where I'm coming from. And so I'm just trying to figure out what's going to be the best for me and my family and me financially as well because, you know, it all boils down to money in the end anyways, no matter if it's for y'all or for me or for them, you know what I mean? And so.
Well, I can't.
Or whatever, you know, so.
I don't think any of us can speak definitively about the impact that this might have on your property. But historically speaking, I think new construction is usually beneficial. It usually helps the surrounding property owners. It shows that there's interest in expanding and improving that area. So I would, I would be inclined to say that new construction would help you.
Yeah, and, you know, she said it's become stagnant and stuff. But Concho Valley Homes, Zane has built two new houses on the other side. And Mr. Curry and Mr. Hill have built a new house at 331. So it's not like if they don't build these duplexes, people are not going to build that.
Nothing's going to happen, right.
Stuff is already happening there.
Yes, sir.
You know, and so, and they're not tiny homes. And I believe Zane's are 280 and his is going to, his is going to, at 331 is going to be 240 to 260 or something like that. So they're not, you know, multifamily and they're not like real cheap houses. They're decent-sized houses and being built around. So, you know, there's no telling how long that might stay stagnant for. If the investors have already paid for it, now that's on them, you know what I mean? But they can resell the lots. They can do other things, so.
Okay.
I just wanted to bring that point to y'all as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment and take thoughts or emotion.
I'll make a few thoughts if you don't mind.
Sure.
So that area is an infill development area. There's a lot of incentives going on right now for buyers in that neighborhood. There is considerable amount of new construction, which will also help improve some of the existing homes that were built in the 40s through the 60s that have dilapidated to an extent over the years in that area. Having that mixed use is huge. So as far as the gentleman that just approached us, part of the development aspect is for that, for that property owner to get water and sewer back to those three lots, that's a considerable expense. So when you go from maybe paying $15,000 a lot, you now are increasing your costs by putting your water and sewer in. So that may make those lots $35,000 to $40,000. So for that developer to turn around and have to put those back up on the market because they wouldn't be able to capitalize on it, there's not somebody else that typically will come and pay that much money at this point in time. So just to kind of, hopefully that made a little bit more sense for him. If you go a little further down and cross over the river, there's new quadplexes going up over there. So that is a very developing area right now. You've got the river access. You've got the walking trails, all of those things. You've got Shannon really developing. So the need for some nicer rentals is definitely apparent there. You know, you're about six miles or so from Goodfellow. So I think that with all of those things considered, having the ability to have some multifamily in there is definitely a huge bonus. You know, the newer construction will, you know, over time, increase property value because again, it's turning that entire neighborhood, you know, and helping other people potentially redevelop as well. So I am 100% in support of the project with that being said.
I don't think that the request for rezoning is unreasonable given the proximity of multifamily immediately surrounding this, this location. I'm not crazy about the flag lots. I hate them, honestly. I don't like the access, but I don't think that that's grounds to deny a request to put duplexes on these lots with all of the multifamily that's surrounding it. So I think I'm in support of this. Anyone want to make a motion?
Sorry, just another quick point.
Yeah, please.
If the applicant, let's just say, did not get approval on this and did come back seeking, you know, tiny homes, as you mentioned, based on the square footage, the 5,000 square foot lot size, your density would be considerably higher as well. You'd have two to potentially 10 homes versus six. So, so again, so I'll make a motion to approve as presented by staff.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. It's 5-0. Okay, I'm going to jump down. I know we've got several short-term rental cases that are on the agenda that we're going to move through. But I think it might make sense for us to jump to the ordinance amendments. City Council has final authority for amendments to the zoning and subdivision ordinances. And this is discussion on amendments to Section 406 of the zoning ordinance regarding short-term rentals.
Good morning. Rayline Berry, planner. So we pretty much did what Planning Commission asked. We made the few changes, adding the educational building that it's utilized by the schools for the 500 feet close to a school. And we did, what was the other thing you guys asked for? Oh, the closest property line to closest property line. So we did add those. However, staff has been working and we came to the realization of something. So I'm going to bring up two new things to make sure we are interpreting it the way that you guys intended. So I'm going to switch over to my other lovely map here. So what we realized is we have the 500 feet right now for RS1, 2, and 3, which is what you guys suggested. We realized that that does not include R and E. And I'm going to give you an example. So right now, everything in green is not, or yellow, I guess, is not RS1 zoning. It is commercial, R and E.
RS zoning. Single-family, RS.
Correct, I'm sorry.
Okay.
It is, everything in yellow is not RS. So if you notice right here, this is Butler Farm. Butler Farm is R and E. So with the way that we had it, we are saying that they would require conditional use, but they could have one within 500 feet of each other. So staff is going to suggest that we include R and E in the 500 feet. Thoughts on that from the board?
Makes sense to me. It's residential zoning and I think a lot of the objection and concern that's been raised by the public has been in subdivision areas.
I think that's obviously the intent of the ordinance.
Yep.
Okay. So we will add it to be RS1, 2, 3, and R and E. The other thing that staff noticed is at the very top, if you look at the ordinance that we gave you guys, it says that the general standard's in all zoning districts. So staff would take that to mean that in all zoning districts, you would need a conditional use for a short-term rental. The way our discussion had been going, it kind of sounded like you only wanted the conditional use for residential for the RS1, 2, 3, and R and E, not CBD, not commercial, anything like that. So we, staff is suggesting also that we change that line up there to say in residential, R and E, RS1, 2, and 3 zoning districts. These are required.
Yes.
Can I jump in just one sec? So the other part of this is we have a use table in Section 313. And in that use table under STRs, it actually has the CBD as allowed by right.
Yes.
Wouldn't have to come for a conditional use. So that got us thinking about the other zoning districts where that should also maybe be allowed by rights, so.
We've also got, within this broad category of non-residential zoning, we have hotels that are short-term rentals. I mean, that's, that's, that's the, that's the business. So I don't think we ever intended to. I think that the conditional uses, in my mind, have always been within residential areas.
Right.
Jackie, we'll get to you in just a minute.
So in the amendments, like Ray was saying, under the general standards, I think we removed the "in all zoning districts" language. And then in that first A1, say, unless allowed by right pursuant to the use table in Section 313, then you'd have to come and get the conditional use.
Okay.
Yeah. So those are the two changes that we would like to make before we, that we will present tomorrow to City Council as a discussion item. The rest, I don't know if you want to kind of sum up all the changes we've made over these last few months?
I think it would help probably to, just to refresh everyone's memory. This memo, I think, would be sufficient if you just kind of touched on, and if there are questions from the Planning Commission as we go through it, you know, that might be.
I think we also do need to clarify the planned development district as well.
Okay.
We've talked about those, but in a PD, do you want to talk about that quickly?
Yeah. So I'll go back, hold on, to my little picture here. Anything in gray has a planned development. And so the staff, the way the staff is interpreting this ordinance would be, it depends on the underlying, the base zoning for the planned developments. If the base is RS1, RS2, they'll be required to come get the conditional use. No?
I don't think that's what we decided. I think we determined that if it's in a planned development district, it has to come back because each of those elements of districts is different. And so they're all unique. So since they're all unique, you will need to see each of those as they come back.
That's fine. That'll work.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we did remove the license required and changed it to a conditional use. We reworded the expiration and renewal text. We also added a line that covered all those that are currently existing. So if this ordinance takes effect, when would they renew next time? And they would all renew as of January 31st, 2025.
Yeah, I think this is one of the most significant changes that I want the public to understand a little bit better. So as it stands today, we have a one-year initial license or conditional use that's granted at the end of that year. It comes back and it's renewed and it's two-year terms going forward. But there, there is no timeframe or timeline with when those properties can come before us. And so what the staff has proposed, and I think we're, I support the idea of standardizing the entire process where everyone gets a conditional use permit one time, January 31st every year. So if you come in at any point this year, you'd pay, you know, the fees or whatever to get the approval. And then on January 31st, just like with everyone else, you'd pay the fees again. You'd go through that annual process and get into the system. I think it's going to help the staff monitor and track these properties a lot easier than it has been up to this point. So go ahead. Sorry.
No, you're good. Yes, so everybody would come back at the same time every year. It wouldn't be this person originally got theirs in January. This person got it in May, so they'd come back in May. And the other one in January. It's, it puts it all together.
And it's tied to the property owner, correct? Not the property.
It would be tied to the property for that term. So like if a sale happened in the middle of the year or whatever, that new owner would get to continue the use until the next time it came up. But then, yeah, when it renewed, I mean, they would of course have to come and give us all their information and change it over.
Sorry, go ahead, Ray.
Okay. So we did remove the requirement for the owner to provide the operator information within the 200-foot notification. Staff still has to provide the operator information in the notification when they very first come and get a conditional use. The owner is still required to place it in the, in the house where people can see, or occupants can see it. It is just, if something changes, they do not have to mail a letter out to the surrounding 200 feet.
Okay.
So this is where we reworded the 500 feet to explain a little bit more how it's measured and that it is the, we did the 500 feet, property line to property line for current STRs. We also did the 500 feet from a school, elementary and/or secondary public school. And again, like I said, we, we made it RS1, 2, and 3 and R and E zoning. And we also made it not variable by ZBA, zoning board of adjustments. I do want to also point out one more thing on this one. Staff, the way staff is going to measure to make sure you guys. Staff, the way staff is going to measure, to make sure you guys agree, if, I'm gonna take, if you see this little green area right here, okay? Let's say that that is commercial. They're allowed by right, the way that we're saying it. So, there is no 500 feet. So, let's say we do know that there is one practicing there. The 500 feet, let's say this residential house over here decided that they wanted to do an STR, the 500 feet will not include this green area. So, that way, they can still practice, or not prac, operate. That 500 foot of that one would not count. Is that the way you guys intended?
Yes.
Okay. So, we also added and clarified the process and requirements for appeals. Right now, it's a 30-day appeal window. The second you guys approve and everything like that, they have from today until 30 days to appeal it to City Council. That's kind of a large window for people to get everything ready and not operate until that 30 days is up. So, we shortened that to 15 days. And I think that was it on that one, the appeal. So, then the next one, we've replaced the requirement for a change of occupancy to do a required inspection checklist for life safety items. It'll also be done, when they come and apply for a conditional use, we'll automatically send them over to building. And they'll get that inspection done. It is items like fire extinguishers, smoke detectors, that they have the operator information posted. It is that type of thing, so we're not asking them to spend a lot of money to fix things. But they'll get that inspection done, and then they'll be sent back over to us to then bring it to you guys. On the renewal process, again, they'll apply, they'll get that done, and then we'll continue with the renewal. So, we did change it. A lot of them have not had a chance to get a change of occupancy because of all the requirements that was required, so we thought this would be a lot easier. Any questions on that?
I think we talked about this one last time a little bit, but this is an important change in my mind because, really, kind of, I think the way that was being looked at was more or less as a commercial building, and it's not. It's a single-family residence that these things are. And so, they're not typically gonna meet the code of a hotel or an apartment building. And so, this is a much-needed change, and it makes it, makes a lot more sense.
Yep.
Correct.
I agree.
And the checklist, I think, will be very helpful, too.
Yes. So, we also did eliminate the requirements that are no longer allowed, the 30-feet pavement width, the outdoor gatherings, those kind of issues. And then, we added a failure to comply section, so that way, upon renewal, or even before that, if any of these are brought to staff's attention, we can bring it back to you guys, and there's a possibility to revoke their conditional use. But we kind of listed out some of those items.
It does include, that does would be, by be communicated to us even in the renewal process as well, correct?
Correct. Yeah.
I thought I remembered that, but just...
Yeah, during the renewal process, everything technically would be administrative unless they hit any of these items, issues.
Yes, gotcha. Cool. Thank you.
We really appreciate it. Any questions? Anything else that you can think of that you made notes on you want us to change? This is, so, I'm gonna say, this is the timeline we're doing. Tomorrow, we're going to discuss it with City Council to make sure, to get their feedback and if there's any changes they want, those type of things. If there's not a lot of changes, then we are so, are also going to request a joint meeting with you guys and City Council for January 16th to then vote this into, not really into play, but into, into city ordinance. So, if you can keep January 16th on your calendars, because then the following week would be your guys' normal meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, Ray. All right, I'm gonna open it up for public comment. Please. Yes, ma'am?
Forgive me, I'm getting in on this one a little late.
That's okay.
But my question is, because I have to understand this, because there was a lot of discussion, but you all are discussing, this is basically residential homes that want to become Airbnbs?
Yes, ma'am.
I got it. We've got one of those. So, and what you're proposing is that now people are going to be required to come to you to get a license?
No.
To operate this?
They've been required to come to us to get a conditional permit or a change of occupancy in order to operate a short-term rental in a residential area.
Okay, but you're not gonna require them to abide by code, but you're gonna create a checklist that you hope they abide by code, like things like fire extinguishers?
No, ma'am. No, there's, the original, the original, the original ordinance required a change of occupancy. And the Building Department's interpretation of that change of occupancy was to evaluate the structures on a more commercial basis than residential.
Right, because commercial has definitely different building requirements.
Correct. And so, the requirements were very cumbersome, very costly, and very difficult for operators to comply with. It linked in the timeframe.
I know, I do that, I know, I understand completely.
So, the focus shifted back to, what's the real intent of those inspections? Well, it's life safety-related. Are there smoke detectors? Are there fire extinguishers? Are the...
I understand that.
Are the utilities connected properly?
Okay, so now, you're going to tell them, tell us as individuals, if I want to rent my place as an Airbnb, Airbnb, that you're going to tell me I have to abide by certain fire and safety codes, that you're going to tell me that when I do that?
You would have, if you...
I'm gonna come to you, and you're gonna give me a license, and it's gonna tell me that I have to abide by these codes?
No. There would be a checklist.
A checklist, yeah.
That someone from the Building Department would come to your property and inspect.
Like, they do our current commercial stuff supposedly?
Yes, ma'am. They would do, they would do a walkthrough inspection and go through the checklist and verify that the life safety requirements that are on the checklist are being met.
How many additional building codes inspectors are we gonna need? And what's the cost of that? And how much of the licenses? And what's the cost to us?
The checklist is to eliminate the need of so many people on these homes. The fire department, or the Fire Marshal's Office, the plumbing, the electric, all those different people currently have to go look at those homes. With the checklist, one person goes and they check that.
I do this for living.
So, that way, it eliminates the need...
What happens is, there's a checklist, just like when they sell real estate, there's a checklist, and they inspect it. So, again, you're setting up a system I'm concerned with. Again, it affects us, and the cost to us, the money to us is the person doing that.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, now, I've gotta come to you to get permission for a license?
This is...
You've always had to. You've always had to.
Okay, I know, but I'm objecting, this is getting, because now, the impact, you know, the city costs, now, we've gotta have additional inspectors there.
We're actually simplifying that.
Once again, this is an item that Council has already taken action on, so it's in place. They're just looking at how they're going to adjust some of the things. So, arguing the fact that it's in place, Council is already going on that.
I'm not arguing the fact, I'm aggressing how we're going to address even these additional issues, okay? And it comes from the, what we see happening in our city with commercial, is all these lovely codes are in place, but they're not, nobody's addressing it, and they're not being taken care of. And so, now, we've applied this to city, and we're gonna do the same thing. So, you understand what I'm telling you, right? But I understand that it's already done, but I'm still stating my concerns about this because we're building this big bureaucracy to do these things, and it's already not functioning well in this city.
Yes, ma'am. We understand your concerns.
And it's gonna impact me financially, it's my money.
Yes, ma'am.
Charlie Kemp, building official, I want to kind of address some of her concerns.
Sure.
One concern is, they will be getting permits, it's gonna be a minimal permit fee, and then we do an inspection. We do that with all types of permits, different projects, things like that. And one reason that we are looking at it is, it's under the International Residential Code. The Fire Marshal's Office, they work under the International Fire Code and International Building Code. Those are commercial standard codes. So, we, the Building Permit Department, we are directly with the International Residential Code, and that's what we're gonna be looking at as far, as far as life safety concerns and things to that effect. One thing, no different than commercial and residential, is that if you're not touching it, we're not asking you to redo it, to bring it up. That would be difficult for anybody. So, we understand that, and that's what this checklist comes from. It's like, we want the people to be safe and also be reasonable to those that are trying to operate the facility.
Thank you, Charlie. Anyone else wish to speak on the changes to the short-term rental policy? Going once? All right, I'm gonna close public comment. Do you guys need a direction from us, or...
Just a direction, if y'all are acceptable for us to move forward, the discussion with City Council. It is just a discussion item with City Council and a request for a joint meeting, and that's when the actual ordinance will be heard, in January.
Okay.
Great job, guys.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for the work on it.
Well, we had a lot of folks involved, of course, you guys, our legal team. Ray and Sheri did a great job of doing background, and even our former director, John James, where it kind of started, and everybody's pitched in, our building official, and so, we, we're appreciative of the team effort, and we think we've got a good product to move forward.
Okay. Thanks, Erin. Okay. I'm gonna jump back to conditional uses. The Planning Commission has final authority for approval of conditional uses. Appeals may be directed to the City Council. CU 2353 requests for approval of a conditional use to allow short-term rental located at 2301 Palms Court.
You can just bear with me just a minute. As you indicated, this is a request to allow a short-term rental at 2301 Palms Court. The zoning there is RS1. It is in District 1, Tommy Hebert's District, and it's in the Nazworthy neighborhood. It is also their first request for this piece of property. What we have taken to doing is, in each neighborhood, we give you an indication on what is already approved in that neighborhood, what has either expired and what has been denied. So, there are seven short-term rentals that are already approved in that area.
Sheri, I am so sorry to interrupt you.
Am I wrong?
I got, I got a little bit ahead of myself here. We were talking about the short-term rental ordinance, and there's a very important question that I wanted to ask the staff on the changes before we go forward. And it's regarding deed restrictions. So, is there, is it possible for us to put language in the short-term rental ordinance that says if there are deed restrictions that don't allow it, then you, there can't be applicants?
It's possible, but I don't recommend you do that because there have been two Texas Supreme Court cases that have talked about deed restrictions.
Okay.
And not in the city enforcement side, but it was in HOA contact, context. And those cases looked at interpreting what the restriction said, and basically, they were saying along the lines of, you know, you can't have any commercial uses. Well, the court said that STRs are residential uses, and there was no restrictions on, like, minimum duration of leases. So, if you have something like that in the ordinance, you're gonna be interpreting restrictions. And I think that just opens us up for litigation. And restrictions are meant to be enforced by, like, if there is an HOA, the association itself, or as between private property owners. So, I don't think the city even has standing to address that. But there is one ordinance provision that already exists that kind of addresses it, and it's outside the STR ordinance, but it is in the general provisions of our zoning ordinance. And I'll just read that here. So, wherever the requirements of this zoning ordinance are at variance with the requirements of any other lawfully adopted rules, regulations, or laws, the more restrictive or that imposing the higher standards shall govern. However, this zoning ordinance is not intended to supplant or replace private deed restrictions and covenants, except where coincident with the provisions of this zoning ordinance and any other lawfully adopted rules, regulations, or laws. So, the fact that we might approve NSDR under our zoning ordinance because it meets all the requirements, if there are deed restrictions, a property owner isn't gonna be able to rely on that approval to say, hey, these deed restrictions don't apply because this provision does address that.
Okay. Perfect. Yes, ma'am, I'm gonna open up public comment. Jackie, come on up.
Travis, you bring up a very valid point. When I was in Austin, and Marble Falls moved back from here, I lived in a gated community across from Balcony's Wildlife Preserve. And somebody within the gated community, against the deeds, tried to turn it, one of their things into an Airbnb, and it turned into quite an ordeal.
Yes.
Because we, yeah.
We have a lot of subdivisions that have deed restrictions, and that's why I've raised the question.
Exactly.
This case that's before us has deed restrictions, and that's what reminded me...
Because you don't want to set yourself up, because, and so, maybe just make people aware of that to begin with, is one of your things, so...
Thank you.
That's another idea. I mean, in the application, we could say, you know, your deed restrictions are something like that.
That would be great. I think that would really help. It would also help the applicants understand maybe the potential road for them. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for letting me interrupt, Sheri. I'm sorry.
Anytime.
We're back to, we're back to this case, 2301 Palms Court.
Yes. As I indicated, there are seven already approved STRs that are operating in the area. There's one that's expired, and there were two that were denied. And the applicant is the gold star up at the top. We sent out 15 notices. We received one in favor. Since then, we have, I originally had seven, we have received another one, so there are eight that oppose the short-term rental.
Okay.
Staff is recommending denial of the conditional use to allow a short-term rental at 2301 Palms Court. Since it has become apparent to us that the applicant seems to be already operating or advertising the, their address as a short-term rental without going through and receiving approval first and completing all of those requirements. And again, there is also substantial concern expressed by the surrounding property owners against the short-term rental. And yes, we did include, because we had a number of the, those in the neighborhood that objected and sent us copies of their CCNRs, we did include that in the staff report that went out to you because we wanted you to make, to be aware that there was such a thing already that had been approved by them.
Okay.
Are there any other questions?
Anyone have questions for the staff? Thank you, Sheri. I'm gonna open it up for public comment. If you wish to speak on this case, please state your name and address or single-member district.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Joel Carr. This is my life, Lindsay Carr. We are the trustees of the properties at 2342 Palms Court and 2334 Palms Court. We reside at 2342. When we bought these properties and built a home there, it was our understanding that there were covenants, deeds, and restrictions that prohibited such. And at the, to open it up for that could, once, as it was said before in plain language, it's a money issue, okay? It boils it down to, well, you look at the equity in your home and things like that. So, that is of concern. Before you buy a piece of property in this particular subdivision, you are supplied with a copy of these deed restrictions. You have to sign for it. So, in plain language, you go down to Stroman, you sign your papers, and they give you a copy, and they say, sign it. Do you understand it? And we all say, yes, and then you go with that. And it's very clear in those, and I think the copy of that has been provided to you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, does anyone else wish to speak on this case? Is the applicant or an operator for this property present in this meeting? Okay. I'm gonna close public comment and take thoughts or emotion.
Make a motion to deny.
Yeah, I'm with you. And as we've said before, if you're planning on making money off your property and can't show up to the meeting, I don't think that's a good business standard, so I'm gonna second.
I agree 100%. So, we have a motion and a second to deny the short-term rental at 23...
01.
01 Palms Court. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, opposed? So that's a 5-0 denial. Next case, CU 2354, requests for approval of a conditional use to allow short-term rental located at 322 South Van Buren Street.
As you indicated, this is a request, their first time for a short-term rental at 322 South Van Buren. The zoning is RS1, the district is District 5, Karen Hesse-Smith's district, and it is in the Santa Rita neighborhood. Whoa. This is a map of the neighborhood. The applicant is the current yellow star at the top. There are eight approved short-term rentals in the area. There have been four that are denied and three that have expired. We sent out 20 notices. We received zero in favor and one opposed. And the one opposed is the one at the bottom of the 200-foot notification. Staff is recommending approval of the short-term rental in that they have met all of the requirements according to our ordinance. We are recommending three conditions, that they maintain the two off-street parking sites that they have on the premises, that they obtain their certificate of occupancy or comply with ordinance change as it occurs, and they obtain and comply with an annual fire inspection by the Fire Marshal's Office. And with that, is there any questions that you have on this particular one?
Does anyone have questions for the staff? Thank you, Sheri. We're going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this case, please come forward, state your name and either address or a single member district, please.
I'm Paul and this is my wife, Melissa Clusey. We're actually the owners of the Airbnb. And I guess since it's been approved, we just want to say thank you so much for the recommendation for it to be approved. And it's a big relief because this used to be my wife's grandmother's house.
Oh, wow.
And we wanted to keep it into the family. And we unbeknownst to the family, she took a second mortgage, no, a reverse mortgage on it.
Oh, wow.
And I don't know if anybody's dealt with a reverse mortgage company, but we had to pay 25% more than the house was worth just to get it, keep it back into the family.
Oh.
And...
We had to move there ourselves.
And unfortunately, she developed Alzheimer's in her later life. And the house fell into real disrepair. And I wish I could have brought in some photos of the house when she lived there because it didn't look anything like this. We put probably $100,000 into that house to get it to look like it does right now.
Wow.
Being denied on this one would have been a huge financial and a heartbreak to our family. So I'm really happy you guys are letting to do this. We really do appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment and take a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? 5-0. All right, the next case is CU 2356. It's a request to approve conditional use to allow short-term rental located at 1710 West Avenue H. Is Bailey?
The zoning there is also RS1. It is in District 5, Karen Hesse-Smith's district, and it is in the Santa Rita neighborhood. That is a picture of the property. Same applies in this area. That is the neighborhood. The applicant is the gold star. Eight approved, four have been denied, and three have expired in that neighborhood. We sent out 21 notices. We did not receive any in favor and we did not receive any responses against. This applicant has met all of the requirements that we have. Staff is recommending approval of the short-term rental at 1710 West Avenue H, subject to the following three conditions. Maintaining the two off-street parking spots, to obtain the certificate of occupancy from permits and inspections, and to obtain and comply with the annual fire inspection. And with that, are there any questions?
Anyone have questions for the staff? Sheri, thank you. I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this case, please come forward, state your name and address or single member district. Seeing none?
Sheri, I do have one question. In regards to, like the one that I emailed you about, there was two other ones that got previously denied because there wasn't one in operation. Okay. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to close public comment.
That's not this one.
That's not this one?
No.
Because there was one that there was an application in the works, but those other two had been denied.
So...
It was this one. It was this one.
Okay.
There was an Avenue I that prevented Live Oak and Jackson from going. And they have withdrawn and they are not doing a short-term rental anymore.
Okay.
And this one has now applied to where now Live Oak cannot.
Okay.
If you approve this one.
Okay.
If you approve this one.
Okay.
Yeah, makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to take a motion or thoughts on the case in front of us here. This is 1710 West Avenue H.
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 5-0. Next one, CU 2357, a request for approval of a conditional use to allow short-term rental located at 306 North Monroe Street.
Ray Lineberry Planner. So this is a new STR in RS2 zoning, District 4, Lucy Gonzalez, the central neighborhood. That is a picture of it. This is the map of the neighborhood. We do have four that are approved and operating. The yellow star is the current application, and there is one expired. We mailed out 21 notices. We did receive one in favor. It is the owner. And we received zero in opposition. So staff is recommending approval as long as they maintain their parking, they obtain a certificate of occupancy, and an annual fire inspection. With that, is there any questions?
Thank you, Ray. Okay, I'm going to open this one up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak? All right, I'm going to close public comment and take a motion.
Comment, say approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 5-0. Renewal, CU 2219, request to renew a conditional use to allow the continued use of a short-term rental located at 2015 Beatty Circle.
Okay, so now we have hit the renewals. This one is 2015 Beatty Circle. It was approved last December, and they have been operating, as far as I know, just about the whole year. They did get a change of occupancy shortly after getting approved, and they did supplies with their hotel tax payments. It is in RS1 zoning, District 1, Tommy Hebert, the Nazworthy neighborhood. And the yellow star is where they are located. The rest is, there's five currently approved and operating, two denied, and the one expired down there at the bottom. We mailed out seven notices. We received one in favor, one opposed. You have a copy in the staff report of the one that was opposed. They didn't really say anything about this particular property. They talked more about 2013 Beatty Circle, which must be an unregistered STR because we don't have that one on our list, which is probably why there's complaints against it. And so staff is recommending approval for the renewal. At this point in time, it is a two-year renewal unless we, the new ordinance does get approved in January. So we are asking them to maintain their parking, the certificate of occupancy, and still get the annual fire inspection.
Okay.
Is there any questions? Oh, and we did check with code and PD, and there has been no complaints on either side.
Great. Thank you, Ray. I'm going to open this one up for public comment. Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment and take a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? 5-0. Item 6, CU 2223, renewal, request to renew a conditional use to allow continued use of short-term rental at 1607 South Park.
This is another renewal. So it is in RS1 zoning, District 5, Santa Rita neighborhood. The yellow star is where they are located, or about where they're located, I guess. And there are four denied. Mine says six approved because I did not include the two new ones that Sheri just presented. So that is the difference there. And we did receive one in favor of the seven notices we mailed out, and we didn't receive any opposition. There should be more notices than seven. But we did only receive the one in favor. We did not receive any in opposition. And again, staff did receive proof of hotel taxes payment. We did check with PD and code, and there has been no complaints on this property either. They have been operating for at least, that we could count, six to seven months. So they did get a good run.
Okay.
So staff is recommending approval.
Anyone have questions for the staff on this one?
No.
I'm going to open up public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this case, please come forward. I'm going to close public comment and take a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? 5-0. Next one, CU 2226, renewal, request to renew conditional use of short-term rental located at 2542 Baylor Avenue.
Yes, the zoning on this one is also RS1. It is in District 5, Karen Hesse-Smith's district, but it is in the ASU College Hills neighborhood. There's two streets from Santa Rita into ASU College Hills. In this neighborhood, they have four approved, one has been denied. And the applicant you can see is down at the bottom of the neighborhood, if you will. We sent out 24 notices. We received zero in favor and zero in opposition. And we did send a request both to the police department and code enforcement. We have had no complaints on this. And they did email me their hot tax also. So with that, we're recommending approval.
Okay. Thank you, Sheri. I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this case? I'm going to close public comment and take a motion.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? 5-0. We've covered ordinances or ordinance amendments. I do have a quick follow-up question, Erin. I know we've talked about compliance in the past with short-term rentals and was hoping that you guys could just give us a quick update on kind of where things are with compliance, please.
Yes, we've been working with our finance team, who's been working with our legal office to particularly work on the collection of hot taxes. We did do a notification to properties from an audit that noticed that certain properties were not paying their hot taxes. During that notice, it was, hey, you have two processes here to deal with, not just the hot taxes, but the conditional use and things like that. We've had several properties, if y'all have seen the numbers come up this year of requests for conditional uses, that have come into compliance. However, there are still a number of properties that have not. And so we still have two avenues of enforcement, if you will, that we're going to be working on. One is the finance and legal department is still working on the hot tax items for those properties that have not submitted their local hotel occupancy taxes. They may have submitted their state occupancy taxes, but not their local. The other is us, we are working with our code enforcement office to generate a new letter, particularly seeing how the new ordinance goes forward, to notify them of this new ordinance, potential new ordinance change, and that they are still potentially out of compliance and that there is a chance that the city will do further enforcement action against them to try to get them to either come into compliance or stop operating.
Okay.
That is a challenging process because you have to have proof that they're operating. And sometimes they may operate once every three months and we may not know it. We are looking at other avenues of how do we track these things.
Yes.
And we are also working with our information department with the city to help us create a website for our public, our operators of short-term renters and our owners of short-term rentals, and Ben and Breakfast, I should always mention, and Ben and Breakfast, that here are the rules, here's how you need to contact us if you have an issue, and how to document things, particularly things that happen on weekends or nights when there's not an enforcement officer available, how we can document things. And then the other thing, I think Rick's kind of mentioned...
I think one, I just want to make sure everybody understands, we don't have people going out looking for violators. San Angelo operates in a complaint basis, basically. So we don't have code compliance officers doing that. So don't misconstrue what he said.
Yeah.
We're doing that. What I will say is that when we're presenting this to council, we will be recommending, probably at their work session, if they want enforcement more in this area, then they're going to need to hire staff to do that.
Okay.
So we currently do not have the staff to do that. So we'll be proposing that to council at their work session.
Okay.
Yeah. So the letter campaign is really trying to get some of that voluntary action on the operators' owners to, hey, we could be doing something more severe if we had the resources, but we're going to be doing everything that we can to help our community.
Sounds great. Okay. Thank you. Public comment. So issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Says for me to limit it to three minutes. Would anyone like to come up and speak? I'm going to open public comment, please.
Hello, again Jackie Chesnut, licensed engineer in the state of Texas. Compliance is my world. I work with the FDA.
Sure.
So in our city right now, we have severe issues with compliance to our commercial codes.
Yes.
And inspectors going out and inspecting and finding things. And this is my world I live in, construction and engineering. I've built half this city, along with my husband. One particular area that I would like for someone to focus on, and I brought this up to them and to Charlie, Al, you know me. And I'm just going to start with one because we have many. And I've lived here 35 years and I love this city. It can be quite a lovely place. At the moment, it's not. But let's look at Stadium Park Plaza. Can you all bring that up on your screen?
No.
Okay. Well, let's look at Stadium Park Plaza where I shop and spend a lot of my time and money going in and out. And that plaza has been modified greatly over the past year, and people have added retail businesses in there and changed buildings and the insides of buildings without getting permits. And things have been done not to fire code and not to safety code. And there are ADA issues. There are issues in the parking lot where we have got Westlake Hardware that's plopped down there, a little garden area out there for quite some time, ever since I've lived here. And now with additional traffic, with the additions of Jason's Deli and the other place and the coffee place, which now that's a big maze nightmare because we got exits of drive-throughs and entrances of other areas. And you go over there at lunchtime or any time during the day. And now with the pizza place here and all this stuff, what y'all have created is a dead gum nightmare and all the retailers in there. And now we're having little accidents all day long. And people are now parking over here on this side of Stadium Park Plaza and infiltrating that area. And those retailers are feeling the impact of that. And because we've got Westlake... we've got Westlake Hardware impeding the parking up here, we've now got everything kicked in here, and we got a big damn mess down there. And I'm the one that's in and out of there, and I'm handicapped half the time. I just had my hip replaced, and it is a nightmare. And that's just one spot as far as ADA, and then the fire hazards associated with that, with the modifications that have made, been made inside the building, which were not to fire code, and our exits as people inside the building and as public citizens, our exits and entrances and egresses that are supposed to be there to provide us safety should the building catch on fire, we're not gonna done correctly. And if you go to the back of the building, we have trees growing up through all the electrical facilities in the back of the building, and pallets, wood pallets piled up all in front of those, which is a lovely little fire hazard. In the city of San Angelo, we have fire hazards all the time. So if I did that at my house and in my facility, for example, at J&amp;J, if I let my trees grow up through the electrical lines, and I'm the engineer assigned to that area, and they would go, "We're firing you."
Yep.
Okay, in about two seconds. Or if I also looked at that and didn't say anything about it, because again, that's my job as an engineer. I'm required to do this by law because it's what I do for a living. So if I go, if I say, "Oh, do we just want to worry about that today, and it burns down tomorrow, and you're inside the building?" Because you might be Luke, um, it might be you that burns down. And we got some issues. And so I would like to see how this planning commission, who's in charge of planning all of whatever happened in this area, and this is one of them, will help address that and see if we can deal that. Plus, you go inside Westlake Hardware, have you met the bathrooms in Westlake Hardware? First of all, none of this stuff is ADA compliant.
Right.
I couldn't get in that bathroom, but I had to, and it's a peep show. Gentlemen, gentlemen, the men's restroom in Westlake Hardware has a hole in the door, so I get to see everybody go do their business if I could find my way in the bathroom. And the ladies restroom, you can't even close the door, ladies. So we have a little peep show. So I'm not a fan of what, and so our compliance, and I've asked inspectors to go, "Look at this," and they told me everything's hunky-dory. So I don't know who's in charge of compliance, but I'd like to take them over there by the hand and show them. And this is one area. So please, if we could, planning, help me figure out how to do this. This is something that needs to be known within the city to make a supply by codes.
Yes.
If we're gonna force residential now, we're gonna try to make them do it. When they want to turn their place into a place to rent and make money, and they're gonna pay hotel taxes and all this stuff, and you're gonna try and enforce that, let's go to some other areas. And I've got a whole list of them. So let's start with that one, because I spend a lot of money in that, and I would really like to be able to get in and out safely, which you can't do now. Really, go sit over there, and I've videoed it. And it's across from the stadium, so when it gets really busy, oh, it's just, yeah. So these are things as part of planning. That's one of my big issues I'd like to address.
And thank you for raising that concern.
Yes, sir.
I, I would, I would expect that this would probably serve as, I know that code compliance is largely complaint-based.
Big.
Is sufficient for a complaint?
Yes.
Most likely, if there are specific things, you've brought, your best way is to turn those into writing. If it's a code issue that we can address, then they will do that. So if you submit those in writing, that would be the best. There's several things you mentioned today that actually the city has no authority over, and this board certainly has no authority over. But submit those specifically.
Okay, so-
I would say if they're, if they're compliance, if they're, ma'am.
Okay.
If they're compliance issues pertaining to code, um, there's a code officer, you can submit those to our office, and we'll pass him along to Rudy.
Who's the code officer?
So Rudy, so you, he's not here.
Yeah.
So if you want to submit those to our office, you can, and we'll pass those along to Rudy and make sure he gets them.
Okay, okay.
And then they can also tell you if there's ones on there that the city has no authority over whatsoever, then we'll pass those along.
Well, the city definitely has authority.
I'm just telling you, submit them in writing, and if we do not, or if we do, we'll let you know. You can send them to me, that's fine.
Okay, do I have your card?
I don't have a card.
Charlie, who do I-
You can send them to me.
Okay, because this Stadium Park Plaza is gonna be dealt with.
And then we'll have them respond to you. Most likely, that, you'll need to include your email address, those kind of things, so they can respond to you in writing.
Yes, because I, I would like these addressed.
Yeah, so they'll tell you whether those are-
Okay, and then-
And we have a three-minute timeframe on-
Yeah, then I'll get, and then the other thing, and I'll just bring up, and I'll get off your, off your backs, because I know you don't want to hear this.
Yes, ma'am.
But also, the bottom line down here says, "In compliance with the American Disabilities Act, the city of San Angelo will provide reasonable accommodations for persons attending board meetings and commission meetings," that I'm supposed to request that forty-eight hours in advance.
Actually, in this case, Teresa Special is our-
I know Teresa. Yeah, we've had a conversation. Yeah, she doesn't know anything about-
And she's helping us make sure those are all in compliance.
Actually, I, I wanted to be that, in that job, because I know that job, because we are very, our city, our city ADA.
Is it with Teresa?
Yes, ma'am.
She's only twenty years behind, ladies and gentlemen. Yeah, I know, I've already talked with Teresa.
Good.
Yeah, she, she lets old people get assaulted in this town, so we won't even get into that.
Oh, no. Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
Morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to live here safely for the next, if I'm alive.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Josh Blazant. Uh, live in District One. Uh, I'm an owner of three STRs here in town.
Yes.
Um, I, I just wanted to kind of talk to you guys about this whole process and give you some of my thoughts on it. It's been, it's been an incredibly trying process for us to get these approved. Uh, this is just something my wife and I are doing, you know, it's a supplementary income. We don't own a large business. We don't have a division of people that can help us, um, adhere to all of these rules and regulations. And I'm really glad to see you guys are unifying all of the rules in a single place, because that was something that was incredibly difficult, yes.
Yes.
I also, I'm, it, it's upsetting to hear that you guys don't have any kind of budget for enforcement, because it makes, it makes me feel, you know, what, why am I jumping through these hoops to comply with all this when your, your rules have no teeth? You know, uh, there's, there's something like twenty, I think there's twenty-five now, that I've got two more on here. So I own, I own twenty percent of these things in town, and there's ninety-plus. And this is not me advocating for enforcement, I'm just, why am I, why am I complying? There's no benefit to me complying right now, because I could be doing what hundreds of other people are doing in town, not following the rules.
Absolutely.
Ignoring your HOT tax.
Yes.
You know, there's just no benefit to me doing this right now, and it's a difficult process.
I understand your concerns.
So this is more frustration than, than anything.
I, I understand. Uh, and we feel the same way. We, the, the, the idea of compliance, uh, it, in this specific incident, or instance, excuse me, uh, it, it really, it covers a broad range of issues. Um, so obviously, collection of income.
Sure.
That the city has, deserves for someone that's operating. But life safety, life safety's a, and for me, I, that might be the, the most important thing to me, and to have the ability, if, if we're gonna change the, the use and allow folks to come in from out of town and stay in these structures, to have someone that has some expertise in construction to walk through, and just make sure that it's a safe structure, is important to me.
Another point I would make to you is that I would, I would really reconsider y'all's, I, I know it's, uh, it doesn't sound like an official policy, but an unofficial policy of denying anybody that's been operating, that's attempting to come under compliance.
Oh, no. I, I don't think that's the case at all.
Because that, that-
No.
I mean, that's kind of what that sounded like. That was kind of a, one, one of them that came up, um, I can't remember which one, was it, was it Beatty?
They haven't actually approved Palm Court.
And, and I understand, and I understand they had other issues.
I was gonna say, I, I think it was the other, it wasn't just-
But that, that was a point that was brought up, and I would say, you know, that, that shouldn't be something that should be considered. If somebody's attempting to come under compliance, they should be given every opportunity to be come under compliance.
They've approved those in the past. They have approved those in the past.
We have.
So the, the difference with that one in particular was-
Yes.
They didn't come forward saying, "We want to start complying."
Sure.
It's, they were caught.
And, and, and the other really important note for me personally, they weren't here.
Sure.
So i- if you want to operate a short-term rental in this market, and, and you want to go through the process, and you don't have the courtesy to show up and defend what you're trying to do against maybe opposition that you're facing from local neighbors, how does that reflect, what, what indication does that give us of your operations going forward? How can, how, how, you know, accommodating might you be to some concerns that residents raise, uh, when, when an issue does come up?
Absolutely.
There are problems that occur, and it's the response that's most important.
Especially with that many denials, like, there were a few other ones that got approved today that the applicant wasn't here, but there also was not opposition either.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, you had an entire neighborhood in denial from that one.
Another, another point that I wanted to discuss, that I know, I know this board does not have the ability to affect, is the, the hotel occupancy tax. The way that it's set right now, uh, we're being taxed on unrealized gains, because it's a total, it's a total gross room rental receipt. So I, I operate with Airbnb. Before a single dollar hits my account, Airbnb pulls the state hotel occupancy tax.
Yes.
And I think it's unfair that I'm being taxed on a dollar figure that's already being taxed. So, so the, the effective tax rate is higher than six percent, which I think it's like almost seven percent, which is higher than the state's hotel occupancy tax.
Okay.
So when you file your taxes at the end of the year, does any of that get refunded because of overage, or?
Uh, we, we haven't done, we've been operating for a fairly short time, so we haven't gotten to a full tax year yet. Um, but it just seemed that it was something we were going through on this HOT sheet, and it seemed, you know, an unfair thing to do.
No, thank you for bringing this up.
I'm glad you brought that up, yeah.
Yeah, because again, with, with none of us owning or operating STRs, we're unaware of that aspect.
Um, the, there's also a discount line on there, which is incredibly silly, and it's worded poorly. Uh, it says to deduct one percent of line four if paid before due date. It amounted, I think, on this one to, to eighty-nine cents was my discount for paying on time. So my recommendation would be-
One percent of the tax.
My, my recommendation would be to, to either make it a genuine discount for paying on time or early, or get rid of the discount, because it's just, it's kind of nonsensical, so.
Yeah.
But I appreciate you guys, uh-
Is there a contact person that deals with the hotel tax in San Angelo, or how is that handled?
I would say that's probably our finance department is the one that helps collect that. Ryan Gaddy's our assistant director there that kind of oversees some of that area.
And a receipt would be great for paying that.
Yeah.
Currently a system in place for that.
No receipt.
Oh.
Yeah, you just make a copy of your hotel occupancy tax form.
And if you need any of that, talk to Ryan Gaddy.
Yeah, and he's been incredibly helpful. I've, I've been working with him on this, but, uh, just some points for you guys to bring to the attention of city council.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think, I think that those are valid points that should be addressed, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate y'all's time, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much for coming up. Okay, anyone else wish to speak during the public comment section? Alright, I'm gonna close that. Uh, planning directors' report.
I really just have a, one thing. Um, just wanted to show everybody that our planning department, as well as our community, did receive an APA award for planning excellence. Uh, and we're gonna actually ask our information office to post some stuff online, on some social media. You can see a map, and, um, to, to really see that San Angelo really is that oasis out in the west, there's no one around us that is doing these things that we get awarded for, creating places like our Riverwalk, creating our historic downtown, creating boards and commissions that care about what's going on, and having elected officials part of the process. So I just wanted to let you guys know that y'all are part of this as well, and not just city staff, but it's our administration, it's our community coming together for planning principles in our community, and that the city of San Angelo is doing a very good job. So with that, I say Merry Christmas to everyone, and we'll go from there.
Yeah, congratulations, guys. I'm gonna open our public com, opening public comment again.
Uh, one thing I, I wanted to say is that it, it's a constant, it's a constant topic of conversation in San Angelo, that we need more opportunity for visitors to come to see our great city.
Yes.
And these STRs are a really great way to expand that with really minimal investment by the city. I mean, none, you know what I mean? Um, the tax rates that are levied against the operators of these are stout. Before I have a single dollar hit my account, if I remove my, my, um, uh, management fee, which is a low management fee, I'm at fifteen percent off the top. And so what I'm trying to get at is, is make this process as simple as possible for people, because we're attempting to comply, we want to be, you know, doing this correctly, but it's expensive as it is, so don't make it difficult.
Okay. Yes. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Right, um, to the, the meeting, the joint meeting on, uh, January sixteenth, if you're able to. Um, it will be with city council at, um, oh my gosh.
The convention center.
Convention Center, On Rio Contra Drive.
Yes, Jackie. Short, short comment.
Because about these Airbnbs, because we've got one in the family down, and these things are, they are difficult and expensive, and very inconsistent, and that's one of the things that impacts the people that do them too, if it's a part of this, when you're building them into this process, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the taxes and all, which is, yeah.
Thank you, Jackie. Alright, I'm gonna close public comment. Uh, follow-up and administrative issues? Is there anything there?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Uh, announcements and consideration of future agenda items? I don't see a note on our next meeting. So I'm gonna skip that, and- Oh, that's right, so it'll be the, is that the twenty-third?
I believe it's January twenty-second.
Twenty-second, okay.
Twenty-second?
Yes.
So our next regular meeting of the planning commission will be January twenty-second?
And, and you will be voting on chair and vice chair.
Okay. Uh, it'll be January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four, uh, in this room, at nine AM. Um, okay, adjournment. Do I have a motion? We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Uh, five zero, and it's eleven oh six. Thank y'all.